I hope he didn't take your chair.
Yeah, but it is 5:30, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the Manhattan City Commission Work Session for Tuesday, September 28th, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit of double feedback there. Okay, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is the discussion on the strategic plan draft at a glance, review and discussion of that. And who is going to lead us in the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just kick it off first before we start, but Jamie and Sarah are here tonight with planning next to go over a PowerPoint and really discuss the five-year strategic plan at a glance document that was in your packet. We are working to finalize the final full plan, draft plan, for the public to review beginning October 1st through October 17th. We have a couple engagement opportunities, both online and in person throughout that period, for the public to see the elements of the plan and speak with staff and committee members on it. But tonight, Sarah and Jamie are just going to go over pretty much everything that we've done since our city commissioner retreat that was in late June. So we wanted to provide you an update before we went out to the public for that. And Sarah, you should be able to share your screen.
All right, I'm gonna do that right now. Okay, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
So, it's great to be back with you all. As Jared said, we worked together in person back at the end of June, and the last few months, we've spent a lot of time refining the input from what we heard in the May engagement opportunities, working closely with Jared and the staff. So we've got a nice update for you today. So I'm gonna walk you through, hopefully you've had a chance to look at the at a glance document, I'm gonna walk through it. I'll sort of pause as we go through it to see if you have any questions. Feel free to jump in and interrupt me if you've got questions, and then we can also have a discussion at the end. So our agenda is really just to share with you our progress, and then review the draft strategic plan at a glance. And then Jared mentioned a few items of the remaining timeline, but we'll let you know what we're planning to get this through, up through, back for you for adoption, and then, of course, any questions along the way or at the end. So this is our progress diagram schedule that we've been following, and just as a reminder kind of where we've been, you know, we did have our two rounds of public engagement, and, you know, in our opinion, those were very successful, especially this May, when we were able to extend it to do the entire month of May. And so we had in-person engagement, we had virtual meetings, we had online survey open. We engaged the community committee and staff technical committee to help with meeting in a box approach, and also what we call the roadshow, where we were out and about different places of the community, allowing people the opportunity to provide input. One of our community committee members, the co-chair, Fanny Fang, she allowed us to set up outside of her grocery store, and so we were really trying to get out in the community and, you know, get, make sure that it was accessible to people, and because we had it open the entire month, you know, we got really good input. Between the two rounds, we've engaged nearly 2,000 people. Of course, you know, we know that this is a self-selected group, it's not statistically valid, you know, we know that's, we're clear about that, but we feel really good about the engagement that we've been able to do. Of course, in June, we were here with you at the retreat, we also had that same trip, a joint meeting with the technical committee and the community committee, and so that was really the first opportunity for those two groups to come together and really start to roll their sleeves and work on the recommendations and the actions that are now, have been refined into the plan document. We had one additional meeting with both of the groups at end of July, and then since then, as Jared said, we've been working closely with staff to really get this plan in a place that reflects the community input, but has, you know, been sort of refined through staff to make sure it's a tool that they can use as they move forward. So we've done a lot of work in the last several months. So the draft strategic plan at a glance document is meant to be that succinct, high-level document, that go-to kind of overview that lists out the vision, the values, the goals and the actions, and then the mission that was developed as part of this process. So I'm gonna walk through each of these, and I'll pause if you've got any questions or comments as we're going through. So the vision that we've landed on, and this has gone through several iterations, working with the community committee and the staff, going back out, testing it with the community in May, we got some good feedback that allowed us to tweak it, and so this is where we've landed. Manhattan aspires to be a dynamic place of progress, as a leading community in the Midwest with a high quality of life and unparalleled university and military partnerships. Manhattan is a hub of opportunity for all. And I'd like to point out, this bottom line here is bolded, there was a suggestion that came out of the, I think it was the community committee, one of the meetings, about just having sort of a quick tagline, you know, like wanting to be even more concise with the vision. And so this is something that bubbled up out of the input that we received, and we really liked this notion, we could see this on t-shirts and on, you know, materials and things about the city, that, you know, Manhattan is a hub of opportunity for all, and it all sort of, you know, comes back around to providing opportunities for everyone in our community. So I'll pause on that. If you have any reactions or questions, I'm glad to take them.
Just to say that I'm pleased to see both the university and the military weigh in. And the only thing I wondered was about the, about NBATH, and it hasn't opened yet, but it is a real economic generator here with all of the jobs they have, with a lot more to come. So it is more future tense than today, but I don't know how to work it in either, so that's just something to think about.
Okay, yeah, so you'll see some references to that, sort of leveraging that opportunity in the, you know, the economic chapter. It's not necessarily, like you said, reflected in the vision, but we've got it kind of further down in the plan. Sometimes it's hard to get, you know, have everything in the vision that you really, you know, want, but when you see the suite of, you know, the vision, the values, and the objectives together, you know, that might, that might help you see that through there. But, yeah, we worked a lot with how to, we wanted to bring in the military and the university, we worked on different ways of sort of phrasing it, we finally landed on this to just be kind of all-encompassing of both.
Sarah, this is your show. Yeah, Sarah, this is your show. I think it, I think it does a pretty good job. I think we're one of the few places that I know of that has a university and a military partnership, and I think also being general, but also specific to the Midwest is unique as well. We are not trying to be one of the coastal regions and be that type of an area, but we still have, Midwest also kind of portrays a value system in the word in and of itself. So I think it does a pretty good job. I think there was a lot we were talking about, and I think this kind of puts it all together. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll continue on, we can always circle back. So the values, these have been very consistent, they've rated well when we tested them in May, so we feel pretty strong, the strongest values that come out of the community are these six years. So the sense of community, the engaged university and military partnerships, diverse, equitable, and inclusive spirit, the commitment to community safety, active lifestyle and opportunities, and the vibrant culture and access to a variety of amenities. Those were the things that really, you know, came to the surface when people were talking about what they valued most about Manhattan. And I think as you embark on a planning process like this, this becomes a touch point to make sure that anything you're doing in the future, you're still underpinning these values and making sure that those are being upheld. Any questions or comments on the values? So, the goals, I think you all saw a progress sort of list of goals as we were coming out of the engagement sessions and then the retreat with you all at the end of June. We've landed on five goal areas. The first one being a well-run city organization, the second being connected government, the third being enhanced network of infrastructure, fourth, a strong sense of place, and finally the fifth, a strong and diversified local economy. So we worked with some input from the community committee to refine these and really get them, you know, down to these five that we feel like represent what people really want to see. Sustainability was a major, you know, thing we heard, but we thought with input from the community committee and the staff technical committee that, you know, it really, it really should be a thread throughout the plan. So when you see the full plan document, you'll see the little leaf that kind of goes through to indicate. So if you think about sustainability as this thread, it's a, you know, it kind of weaves its way through rather than being all confined to one goal area. So we're gonna unpack these a little bit as we go through like the actions, so we can get into a little bit more about what these mean. So a well-run city organization, you know, this was really about modernization, recruitment and retention of staff, and the fiscal health of the community. So a lot of the things revolving around funding and the budget got pulled up into this, the internal workings of the, of the city, you know, efficiency and modernization, there was a strong sentiment from both staff and the public appreciated this as well about, you know, recruiting and retaining staff. You know, it's a disruption when you have turnover in your staff and things, so having some specific actions. So the actions all are organized under these sort of header themes. So I'm gonna pause here and see if you have any questions. I know you've got the at a glance in front of you, which has just the sort of action titles, but if you have any questions about any of the actions, or the headers, or anything, you know, we can pause here for a second.
Commissioner Hattasol here. My question, going back a page, was are those goals, that's not a priority of one through five in particular as much as just a listing. For example, yeah, the strong diversified local economy would be number one if I had to prioritize them, but it's, they're just listed in some random order that doesn't mean that we're gonna tack one first and then move on to two or anything like that.
Exactly, you're right. And these are just listed here, I think there was some decision about starting with sort of the internal city organization, and that leads to sort of the connected government piece, but otherwise, they're not in a priority order, it does not mean that's where we're starting necessarily. We can talk a little bit about prioritization later, because we are gonna go out for the public review draft, we're gonna ask folks. We've got it about, I think we're at 46 total actions in the plan right now, and we are gonna ask for people to review those and provide some input on like where should we start, what's most important, where do we want to start in like year one to give us that prioritization kind of call down? Because, you know, Jared and I were talking about this, you know, everything's important in this plan, that's how it got into the plan. We heard it from the public, we heard it from the community committee, we heard it from the staff, so it's all important, but you can't start all 46 actions in year one, you'll collapse under the weight of trying, so we need to get a sense, you know, from the community about within these, you know, areas, where are we really gonna start to put our focus for year one? So we're gonna get to that through this public review process, but yeah, these are not in any kind of priority order.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jared Wassinger, Assistant to the City Manager. We did take a lot of thought into the order of it. As Sarah mentioned, there is no prioritization over one or the other, but they really do kind of build upon each other, is the way that when we were looking at the final order, staff came to this conclusion. The first three are really kind of the base, the groundwork that lays the foundation for a community, that well-run city organization and the employees that we have, the connection that we have with our constituents and our residents, that enhanced network of infrastructure is really the base layer of everything that we provide, and then how do we build on that with a strong sense of place that leads to that strong and diversified local economy? So that is one of the reasons that we chose the sequential order of those gold statements.
So any, I know you've got, hopefully you have this in front of you, the goal, the goals and specific actions, but any questions on, on the specific actions that are kind of contained in this first goal, or the objectives that we're trying to achieve?
Sarah, this is Commissioner Ready. When I'm looking at your draft of the, with the goals and more bulleted points, for fiscal health, 1.12 has identified planning plan, spending plan, sorry, for economic recovery and relief sales tax and the ARPA funds. So because this is a five-year plan, is why I figure probably fits into this, right? Because I think their deadline on that is like 2024 or whatever, it seems to be a moving...
I can jump in on that one, Sarah, too. The economic recovery and relief sales tax obviously won't start until 23, but we have some time to plan for that. We have those three areas related to debt and infrastructure, economic development and jobs, as well as workforce housing. So we do know that, you know, we owe it to the community to kind of lay out the plan of how we're gonna be using those funds, at least at the beginning, we do understand it's a five-year plan, so really that action item is just to truly identify it and figure out, you know, a calculated, measured approach for how we want to spend those. ARPA funds is similar, I believe we have until 2024 to identify how we want to spend those funds, and until 2026 to actually expend those. So that's another thing that we, you know, we've heard from the public of an understanding and a plan that, you know, is measured, so we can use those funds in the best way possible.
I suggest maybe breaking down 1.12 to two pieces, one saying spending plan for the economic recovery and relief sales tax, and then the next one, 1.13, being the ARPA funds. The sales tax has a longer timeline, so that might be a little bit better, whereas the American Rescue Plan, they're just two different pockets of money, so.
Yep.
So Sarah, Linda Morris, are you not gonna go through the details to the rest of this? Or are we just looking at this and talking? Do we need to go into the more detail and bring them up one by one, or are you gonna go through what your report does?
I was gonna stay high level and let you all jump in with questions you had. Some of them are straightforward, so I didn't know we needed to talk about all of them, but if you want me to list them all, I can. I was just gonna allow you guys to kind of jump in on ones like that one that, you know, we should have had a question on, so if anything you want more to go on.
I just need to know that, thank you.
Yep, sure.
And we'll throw out there, too, that once you see the full plan document, these summary pages are gonna be in there, but then each section for each goal is gonna have this action title that you're seeing, as well as a descriptive paragraph that really, you know, for example, 1.12, it's gonna define the parameters of the ED sales tax as well as ARPA funds, and that's how it's currently drafted now, along with all of these other action items. We kind of build out that description to provide context to the reader, so that they, you know, they may not understand, what do you mean by modernized technology? Okay, well, you know, we have these areas that we need to improve, and we'll have those descriptive paragraphs within, within and under each action statement.
Right, so maybe, go ahead. I was gonna say, maybe that one can be put 1.12A and 1.12B or something, just for clarification. No big deal, but just a suggestion.
Yep.
And I'm not sure just identifying it, is the verb for 1.12, it should be develop a spending plan. If this is the five-year plan, then that's, we're going to do more than just identify a plan.
Yep.
I also wanted to bring up the 1.9, which is fund a capital improvement program. As I read through this, it sounds like that this is an effort to develop a totally separate pot of money, and currently it is part of the regular city budget. So this is a major undertaking, and I just want to be sure that everybody understands what we're talking about here, if that's the intent.
Yeah, I think that is the intent. Jared, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you, you have the ability, you have some mechanism, but you just don't sort of fund that as a separate, fully like putting everything that would be for infrastructure and big city improvements into that pot of money, so it's, I think it's a different way of thinking about the budget. But correct me if I'm wrong, if I don't have that exactly right, but...
Yep, so we're going through a process internally, and we discussed this with you all at the beginning of the year in January, as it related to our city commission, just goal-setting retreat, but we are looking at a holistic approach to our capital improvement program. We have a committee forum that we're trying to get us in a good position to implement a true five-year capital improvement plan that does have a dedicated funding source. A lot of communities will use it, much like we do with other funds, using a reserve fund that's dedicated to those areas, so we can have a consistent approach, a consistent spending plan, so that we're not, you know, each year pushing projects off or having a backlog of vehicles or equipment that need to be replaced. So it is certainly, as Commissioner Morris said, it's gonna take some time and take some effort and a lot of coordinated efforts from staff and working with the city commission to establish those funds and the process.
I would just add that it'll still be a major part of the budget. The capital improvements program is a key part of the overall budget process, it's just that, you know, for the past five years, it's been the way we balance the budget or meet the goals of the commission to reduce the mill levy, so, and I should qualify that by the general fund portion of the CIP has been the one that hasn't been there in the past. And so being able to have a general fund-supported capital improvement program is an important thing going forward.
Yes, I agree with that statement. I'm glad to see it there. I think as we get it more into clear defining components of it, it's key to part of the goal structure, so.
I just have one comment on this, this part. It all looks like there's no constraints here, and one of the things I want to say in the strategic plan was that the city lived within its means. And I think one of the things I recommended was establish a priority-based budgeting plan to sustain city operations and keep government spending in line with revenue streams, and there seems to be a disconnect there. This is like pie in the sky, we're gonna just fund everything. It looks to me like that means increased mill levies indefinitely, and that's the way I'm reading it, I might be wrong, but that's what it looks like.
The thing, I know that there's been an effort to break out different segments of the budget, reserve funds, benefit funds, and capital improvement, and it seems to me that at some point, the budget as a whole will be diminished, because these independent, these components are such a huge part. I don't know what to do with that, but I do have a problem, my concern is for the general, the general fund and the general budget, and I agree, Ron, we've not been funding the capital improvement adequately. We've been really constraining them, to the point that we've hardly had capital improvement, a capital improvement program. So I just, anyway, just having that discussion is important. I'm not sure about how to come up with separate revenue. The commission has not been receptive to any of the initiatives that have been raised about how to raise additional revenue, and so we're maybe, that has to be, that's 1.10, so that's gonna be something, you know, we've not wanted to deal with. On 1.11, engage with Riley County and the Riley County Police Department on its current and future structure and statutory processes. I am not interested in dissolving the current agreement with Riley County regarding the establishment of the consolidated law enforcement here. I think it's been very successful, and I'm reluctant to engage the, what I call the Waco legislature. I don't want them meddling in it, and if there are a couple of things that aren't just perfect in the statute, as long as it's not, it isn't damaging anything, we just let it go. And so I value the law enforcement we have here, and I hope everyone else does, too. We are not one of those communities that has a huge issue with our population, they are not especially critical of our police department, our police department is healthy, and I would like to keep it that way.
I have a question, Commissioner Esther Brooks, sorry I was late. I guess the prioritization, and I do, I hear what Mayor Butler's saying, because when we had this discussion about going into forming the strategic plan, and should we do this, it was always couched into the concept that it would, it would help shape budget decisions in the future, it would help set priorities, it would help us as, in future commissions, know what the community prioritizes, so we're not kind of willy-nilly, just, you know, taking swings at things and not sure where that's lined up. So with that being said, hearing again Commissioner, or Mayor Butler's comments that goal one, as a well-run city organization, I mean, I don't know what, what does it look like, because for you, that isn't on this paper? Because you, I felt like, you say it's pie in the sky, but it is a priority list. I mean, there's a line that you draw somewhere, right? Is that, or am I misunderstanding the way that this document's set up?
From a prioritization standpoint, we understand that we're not gonna get everything done on this list in year one, or year two, or maybe in year five. A lot of these actions are broad in nature, because they encompass a lot. Modernizing technology, for example, goal one, action 1.1, is going to be a huge undertaking for the organization. One of the first steps is that ERP system, and that will lead to more modernization, where we can shift to online processes and ways to do business with our customers in a more efficient and modern way, and that'll have a ripple effect throughout the organization, much like a lot of these other actions. We're gonna need to, as an organization annually, look at this list and figure out what we can accomplish within a year, while also understanding the trade-offs associated with all the core services our community, our city offers on an annual basis as well, and that's gonna come into that budgeting process. We do intend to develop an implementation matrix that's guided by staff and administration, but also guided by community input. We have an understanding from the input that we've gathered thus far of where priorities are with the community. Now that we have these action lists during the public review period, there will be an activity that people can, can provide their rankings of what they want to see the organization tackle first, but then staff's gonna need to provide that input and experience and knowledge of how we can tackle which ones first. There could be things on here that we just can't get to until year three, because other actions will lead to it. So that implementation matrix is gonna be developed, it'll be presented to the city commission and the public annually, so the public and you all understand where we're going and how we're gonna get there and continue to get there. So I hope that helps with an understanding that...
Well, I think I understand that. I'm not sure that I understand what the mayor is saying in regard to not being comfortable with this document.
Yeah, let me be clear, I just want some more specifics, like in my mind, you know, we're not saying anything here about reducing the city debt. You know, why do we have a debt limit? There's no debt limit discussed. What about outside agency budget impacts? Nobody wants to talk about that. You know, outside agencies eat up a mill every year, why don't we address that? I think, you know, relooking RCPD makes sense, and I agree with Commissioner Morris that we really don't want the state legislature mucking in it, but there's a number of things there that we can deal with, especially the allocation of who pays for what, because that's totally within the confines of what the county and the city can do, and we don't need the state to wade into that. It was set at 80/20 years ago, and it's just never even been discussed since then. We have total control of changing that. So, and then I think, you know, part of the emphasis here seems to again be on mill levy, and I like the idea of, you know, renewed focus on sales tax initiatives, like I like the quality of life, the road maintenance, the economic development, a lot of funds like that. So, you know, and then the idea that what about the mill levy? We're not gonna address that, is that we're gonna continue raising assessments... assessments, mill levy? That's my feel, that, you know, what I'm hearing from people. And I'd just like to see more specifics in, in that realm. And then, and then the idea here of, and I like the modernization part, I don't have any problems with that. Recruitment, retention, pretty much enough problem with that. But 1.6 says, implement the recommendations of total reward study. So, we're going to give a consultant, the total reward study's going to come back and say, spend all this money, and we're just going to agree to that? Because it's in the strategic plan? I don't think so. So, I'm not 100% for that. I'd have to look at what that reward study says. But implement it? I'm not so sure I can buy into that at this point. So, that's what I'm looking at. And the other thing under fiscal health, I agree with the $9 million reserve. We should put that in there as a goal and figure out how to do that over the next few years, putting some money in there. But this just seems to be wide open. It's a pie in the sky, and I just want more specifics.
That makes sense. I think each of these points speaks to just general, you know, categories that we'll have to dive, you dive into and narrow that out. So, that is what I wanted to clarify. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I think when you see the full plan, there's some, as Jared mentioned, some narrative around that. But really, it's going to be, each one of these takes, you know, a specific, detailed, you know, step by step of what it actually, what are you actually going to do, and what is going to contain. So, there's almost like a mini work program for each of these that the staff will, you know, need to work towards and develop as you get into the details. So, I think some of these are, I think, as Jared said, we're trying to allow some flexibility, or maybe they're more broader, because we can sort of put in those details as you start to develop the specific action steps underneath.
And the other thing I didn't mention, I wrote, I provided about 13 pages of input with lots of details. But, you know, the other thing under fiscal health, I don't know if somewhere else in here you're going to talk about enterprise funds. But that's the other one that's always bothered me, is the way we run enterprise funds, and we don't fence our money. And that needs to be in the strategic plan, to take, you know, water funds, and they need to be fenced and not used for anything but water. And if there's, and if there's going to be, if they're going to pay into the general fund, then we need to have a defined method of how that's going to happen. So, that's what I was interested in. A lot of, a lot more budget-related specifics in this plan, that you can say, okay, we're going to accomplish this, you know?
Yeah, I think some of the things that are being discussed can be developed into a policy of some kind. I think what I see this is as a template for discussion, and then the rest of the things that you're bringing up. If current commissioners or future commissioners want to develop a policy, or ordinance, or whatever it might be, to be clear about certain funds and how they're used, I'm not sure that belongs in the strategic plan so much as policies that we develop. I think this, the way I see this is, is as a broad scope. Certainly, it can be tweaked. That's why we're having this discussion, whether added, or the verbiage can change a little bit, or whatever it might be. But this is becoming, this should be a document that future city commissioners can come and put their own bullets underneath it. You just never know how things are going to change in certain areas. And we're still on Goal One, so I don't even know what the rest of the goals are going to encompass, so.
Well, and to that point, I guess, the fiscal health, if I read that, and I'm just, you know, the guy walking down the street and say, what, somehow I'm reading the city strategic plan, because that's what I'm doing. And if I read, build and maintain adequate fund balances, I understand what that means. If I read, fence off the enterprise fund, I don't know what the heck that means, or do I care? And so, but that is the same thing. I mean, that's why this is a larger view, and then you boil down into what's that mean is maintain fund balances. That's, that's what that is. You're getting in the nuts and bolts of enterprise funds, and maintaining that balance for what it's intended to do.
We do touch on enterprise funds within the description that you'll see in the full plan document, specifically related to 1.8, building and maintaining adequate fund balances. The nice thing about kind of the structure that we're going with this document, with this at-a-glance document, as well as the full document, and hopefully, when we create, at the end of this, once it's adopted, we'll create a more interactive webpage where you don't have to sift through a 60-page document, or a 13-page PDF. You can, you can jump to, okay, well-run organization, and click on that. And then you can see the list of actions. And then you can say, oh, building and maintaining adequate fund balances, I like that. What does that mean? And you can click on 1.8. That'll take you to the description. Hopefully, over time, as we're implementing this, we're tracking that progress, so you could see, all right, where are we at, at a fund balance level in these areas? How have we been spending funds? What improvements have we done to modernize technology? So, hopefully, that interaction is going to occur too, so the public can have a clear understanding of where we're going with this guiding document.
Okay, so let's move on. So, this leads us, Jared, that tee-up was good for Goal Two, which we're calling a connected government, which is really about informing, engaging, and connecting people back with the city operations and decision-making in a really transparent and accessible way. So, we've got, you know, actions around notification systems and website, maybe city website updates, and communicating the implementation of the strategic plan, as Jared just said, you know, on an annual basis, you're, you know, doing a report about the status. But if you do some sort of interactive webpage, you can, you can be communicating with people almost in real time. We've helped a couple of, recently, the City of Mobile do put their capital improvement program online, so there's like a dashboard, where people can see the monies and where they're going, and what capital improvements are coming up in the next three-year cycle. And then engaging the community, we heard, you know, that continued, you know, robust community engagement's important. So, you know, establishing those engagement processes and protocols for city-funded projects, and then connecting folks, connecting new community members into the, into the resources and opportunities, and working with regional partners as well, is where that, some of those actions fall into that connected category. So, I'll pause there to see if there's any comments or questions.
So, this is Commissioner Reddy. This would fall into also Goal One of the improved IT, I think, modernized IT software systems. So, they're kind of combined, because even as we add more things to, in this, some of these manners of online and websites and software and all of that. So, that also is, I don't know if anywhere in your documentation where you provide, like, how these, some of these things might be linking up, because you can't really upgrade some of these things without the IT part, unless the IT part is something different, like phones, or something, and it has nothing to do with the website itself, or nothing to do with our computer systems. So, I think there might be a little bit more links between some of these goals. In order for one thing to happen, maybe something else has to happen upfront.
Yeah, no, you're right about that. And I think some of the things that, I think they are interrelated, and maybe there's something we need, I'm just thinking, Jared, maybe there's something we need to maybe put in there about that, because you're right. And I think that's, when you start to detail these, I think that's where that goes, on that work program template, where you would say, oh, we're going to try to do this, but in order for us to do this, these steps need to happen first. And so, you're linking that up and making those connections then, when you're detailing it out. But, you're right, there's a lot of overlap, and I think, and connection back to some of the things that are in the Goal One.
Is, so, one's more internal-facing, and two is more public-facing, kind of, in those systems updates?
Yeah, yeah. It's how you're communicating out to the general public in an accessible and transparent way, the decisions and policies and things that you're, that you're doing.
What the, this is Commissioner Reddy. What does it mean to audit the city's online platforms to streamline information sharing processes? What does that mean? Does that mean a consultant comes and looks at it, or does that mean we do an internal audit with our department heads? What does that mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think it doesn't necessarily mean you have to get an outside consultant. I think that that's something that audit just means, let's look closely at how we're communicating, so that residents can easily find, you know, city information, and also being able to do more things online in kind of a modern, convenient way. So, I think it could be, definitely could be done with work, you know, with the department heads, you know, looking at each of the parts of the webpage, and making sure that there is easy and accessible as possible. Trying to get, you know, forms, registrations, payments, and other things as much online, and is, and easily navigable through the website, so that you're really focusing on that end-user experience.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then we have, the next goal area then is around an enhanced network of infrastructure. And those sort of themes that are organizing the actions are around mobility, infrastructure, and resiliency. So, you know, we've got things about the bicycle and pedestrian systems plan, last mile transportation planning, implementing the airport master plan. And then, of course, infrastructure, some of the basic, you know, continued to maintain city streets, stormwater master plan, and just, you've got the water and sewer master plans to implement. And then, you know, we heard a lot from the public about flooding and things like that. So, resiliency about addressing flooding and pursuing mitigation efforts. And there was an idea about establishing a community resiliency committee. So, that would be someone that, a group of people that come together to think about this, and what can be done, you know, to help in that, in that way. And we did kind of expand from just sustainability to resiliency. I think that's sort of a term that a lot of communities are using, because it's a little broader, especially after this pandemic. People have started thinking about that. There's, you know, obviously, public health components to that, economic components to that. But this resiliency piece is a little more broad, but it also, you know, can be used for, you know, environmental resiliency as well. I think one thing that's interesting in this section is that you've done a lot of good work. You've got a stormwater master plan, you've got a lot of these planning documents, and so this is a place to really reference those, so that you can be implementing those plans, and making sure that the recommendations that were, you know, established in those plans get implemented. So, this is, again, I think, to Fisher's point earlier, like, you know, this is the framework, and then there's, will be, underneath that, you're not going to all, you know, start on all the actions of the stormwater master plan, but you'll need to decide what's the most important thing to start on first. And hopefully, there's some, you know, information in that plan that can help you with that. But this is meant to be that framework by which a number of these things then can get implemented. Okay, I'm going to move on. We can always come back if something strikes you later. So, then we're moving on to the strong sense of place. And this category really is housing a number of, of, you know, ideas and actions around livability, recreation, you know, unique destinations within the community, and education. And these were things that we felt, you know, we heard really strongly throughout the, the public input about just creating this vibrant, attractive, safe, unique, you know, places to come together within the city. So, you know, we, under the livability, we do have, you know, the housing study, restarting the neighborhood MHK program, preservation planning, and maybe doing a cost-of-living study, analyzing that throughout the community. Recreation, you know, you've got a comprehensive parks and recreation plan, so can, developing and adopting that, and then evaluating, we know that there's a study ongoing about the indoor pool issue we heard a lot about, so I think, continue on that path. And then destinations, again, just continuing to foster growth in Aggieville and downtown, continuing corridor planning efforts. And then, you know, there was a recognition of the quality schools. And of course, you know, the schools are separate, they've got their own, you know, school board and things. But, you know, looking for ways for the city to continue, and I think you're already doing this, but leveraging partnerships to support, you know, the high-quality education, whether that's direct partnering, or the city can play a role in what happens, you know, in and around the schools, to help support, you know, education and keeping that top-notch for the community.
Jared, what?
I appreciate...
Go ahead, Linda.
Linda Morris, I just want to say that I appreciate the two or three references to unique community offerings. And so that we aren't like every other city, and we don't have every mall that, and that everybody else has. I, I value this unique, the unique offerings that my, that we, that we can, can and do have here. So, I'm hopeful that we, I'm glad to see it in here. Thank you.
Yeah, we heard that very strongly from the community, that, you know, supporting local businesses and that unique, you know, they need destinations and spaces to bring people together was really important, so.
Jared, what, refresh my memory, what the neighborhood MHK program is?
So, back in...
Jared, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah. Back in 2018, our community development department incepted this idea of neighborhood MHK, which really set the city boundaries into sections of neighborhoods where community development staff could be assigned those neighborhoods, cities, along with other staff throughout the, the organization. But it's a way to kind of grassroots, but also formalize a relationship between neighborhoods, community development staff, other city staff, so we can connect those individuals to resources, talk to them about capital improvements, planning initiatives, areas they want to see improvements within their neighborhood, really just kind of formalizing that process, getting names, getting people together. And neighborhoods could really be as involved or not involved as they like, but it allows that opportunity to, to grow and foster, and that communication to occur. We started it, the idea in 2018. That's when we went through a lot of hiring freezes with the, we kind of had that stagnant sales tax growth, so we really cut a lot of areas. One of those, we lost a few planners that year, so it really just kind of stalled that, that launch of that program. So, we want to relaunch it and create that program, you know, help create great neighborhoods for, for communities. If there's ways to, I know, a long time ago, there was some cool grant programs, a couple thousand dollars a year for certain neighborhoods to do some things. So, thinking of ways to, to improve those areas is something that we'll try and pursue.
Yep. I think that's a great initiative. Like, just to clarify, like, recently, there's been like two that I know city staff has worked on. Like, last night, I went to a function over at the Anthony Rick Center, and it was a neighborhood group worried about trees being knocked down by Kansas Power, I guess Kansas Gas, as they were working on the maintenance line. And Rob was over there, Public Works. And I think they came to a conclusion, it saved a few trees. Aaron was there also. And I think that was good. And another example of how that works, like, it actually involves Mark and myself, because it's in between Wind Song and, and Shering Brook, the Little Kitten Creek, Creek is all collapsing, and it's getting underneath the roadway, and Public Works is taking a real hard look at that and trying to come up with a solution. So, it's, it's things that would focus on, you know, most of the city's not going to worry too much about Little Kitten Creek, you know, just the people that live there. So, that's the idea behind this neighborhood initiative. And I think, I think it'll work out real well, and has to, to the degree the staff's been able to implement it so far. So, I particularly like that one. It's a great one.
I would just add that it's really a liaison position. So, it's a kind of a first point of contact if you've got a new family that has a particular issue, and they don't know where to go. You know, it may end up being a county issue, or a school issue, but this liaison says, well, here's a person in Parks and Rec, or here's a person in the street department, or here's a person in the code department. All of those things that kind of help provide additional information and quicker guidance for directing folks to how they can solve that problem.
So, how are you expecting that new person to know who their liaison is? Is it a matter of the person, hopefully, the person would be contacting their neighborhood association person, or the, somehow, they would get the word through the neighborhood somehow that this is their contact person?
So, we kind of already have some of the next doors. It's communication with those, and how to, just educating folks about this, different sources of communication, whether it be mailers, social media, different aspects of folks communicate through various medias. And so, getting that word out about who that contact person is, is obviously a key challenge to that.
One thing we found too, when we were creating this program back in 2018, is there's a lot of those natural leading voices... a lot of those natural leading voices within neighborhoods now. So, finding those individuals, creating that list, however big it can be, getting those key contacts and relationships established. So, if they don't know who to call at the city, maybe their neighbor knows who to call at the city, or maybe their neighbor knows that Jim or Jane is the, the main person for this neighborhood, and they have the, you know, the ear of city staff, and they can reach out to them. So, fostering that from the, from the individual to the, you know, we still want to build this to something where you can get that whole neighborhood together, and you can start looking at bigger and broader solutions that they may need to see.
This is Commissioner Ready. I had a question about four nine on destinations. It says, continue corridor planning efforts. I'm not sure how that falls into destinations, if we are continuing to develop and implement the, I'm, I'm thinking when you say corridor, the North Campus Corridor or the Edge Plan is what I'm thinking. I'm not sure, is that, is that an indicator as a destination place?
So, it certainly falls under the infrastructure idea, but it really kind of takes it one step further. This, this action specifically calls out not only the North Campus Kimball Corridor, but Blumont Anderson Corridor, K-18, K-113, US-24. We have a lot of planning efforts that have either started or maybe will start. And not only do we need to plan for that infrastructure growth and the growth that's gonna come with it, but how can we help the development around that, the private growth, the entertainment, the destinations that will occur along those corridors? Because not only do we need to, you know, make those safe, look at things like multimodal transportation and access, but developing those in a way that they can facilitate private growth to create these destinations that we're seeing today. You know, when you drive down the North Campus Corridor and you hit that Kimball and College intersection, it helps set the tone for that destination in that area to help facilitate future growth as more cars and more businesses are popping up in that area. So, that's, that's kind of one example of how it takes the step from that infrastructure corridor to the broader picture of the destination and sense of place within this goal.
And really, planning for some of those amenities that should go along with those corridors that don't get left out of that process and are very difficult to put back in once you don't plan for them. You know, obviously, there's been a big goal to try and improve bicycle traffic east on 24. Very difficult to do because you have a major state highway, the bridges don't accommodate it, and probably can't accommodate it till you replace the bridge, much like we're doing with Wildcat Creek, where we, we worked with KDOT to put a very nice, wider bridge and accommodated that pedestrian bicyclist in a, in a better way. So, as you have the built environment and you're encroaching on that, how do you, how do you plan for and ensure capabilities of having some of those amenities, those destination amenities that keep it, preserve green space and other aspects of that, that, that make that environment welcoming?
Okay, so maybe that needs to be kind of just worded as to continue amenities and destination efforts in the corridor planning efforts, or something of that sort. Otherwise, when I first read it, I just think infrastructure. I don't think amenities, I don't think development, I don't think sense of place. It's just a place from, to get from one destination to the other, when I think corridor. So, I don't know, maybe, you know, incorporate a couple of words which indicate a space, a destination space, an entertainment district or amenities, as you mentioned, or something of that sort.
Any other questions or comments? And then, finally, last but not least, a strong and diversified local economy. And we've organized the actions here under sort of business support, kind of helping existing businesses, developing the entrepreneurial ecosystem, supporting local, and then attraction and innovation. So, attracting, you know, new private businesses into the community and leveraging, I think this is where the MBAF piece, Linda, like leveraging innovation from existing local industry sector. So, it's like building upon what you already have here to try to attract more like-minded things to kind of grow in that sector. And then, of course, you know, exploring a diversified retail strategy, you know, retail's important, and the sales tax, so just trying to think about that holistically. And then the community investment piece, just looking at your tools and incentives, fund and to facilitate growth and generate jobs, and continue marketing efforts that promote the community assets to bring visitors, you know, and folks into your unique destinations. So, I know that Jared, we've had a couple work sessions with the chamber, I know that this is gonna be a joint, you know, effort, they're gonna be helping on a number of these. These do, you know, align with their region reimagine strategy, a number of the, the things we're hearing from the public naturally kind of aligned with focus areas that they were already, you know, working on, recovery, jobs, talent, entrepreneurship and innovation. So, there was already a natural alignment there. We've had a couple work sessions with them. And then Jared, I think you had a presentation just maybe last week, and so I think they're, they're up to speed and on board with the items contained in this, this goal five.
This is Commissioner Ready. Does this incorporate anywhere or say anything about the, you know, it says USD 383 Flint Hills, I'm sorry, Fort Riley, K-State, Christian College, and all of these things? But also about the region itself, even though it says region reimagine, is there something maybe related to the Flint Hills Regional Council or anything? So, it's, it's broader than just Manhattan? Because all of the other entities that are mentioned in the paragraph are Manhattan-fixed.
Right, yeah, I don't know that we've mentioned them specifically. I know that the, you know, chamber is thinking larger, and we were kind of, I think, getting them to sort of, you know, sort of focus on Manhattan, but that's not a bad idea to think about how we might be making sure, because no one, no one exists in a vacuum, right? You're part of a larger region, there's a lot of dynamics, so.
Within Action 5.7, you know, our marketing efforts related to the CVB, the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership, those are some areas that we focus on our regional efforts, specifically within Goal Five, from, you know, local economy and, and building that regional hub of opportunity. We do have an action within, I believe it's in the Connected Government, just about supporting regional partners. We have a lot of regional partners that are pursuing a lot of services related to things like childcare, social services. We have other governmental agencies like Riley County and Potawatomi County and RCPD that are pursuing efforts related to emergency management, flooding. So, that's something we could certainly incorporate, the, the Regional Council and their efforts as well, because we do understand, and that, that thread is really throughout the entire plan document of understanding what makes this region special and capitalizing on a lot of those strengths and those partners.
So, I have a request. If, if we're gonna list these organizations, we should certainly include Job Corps, since they're the only one in Kansas, and it's attached to here with a significant amount of federal funds.
Are you talking within the description on the Goal Five page?
I mean, Fort Riley, 383, K-State, Manhattan Christian College, Manhattan MATC, and Job Corps.
We do actually, let me just make sure I'm pulling it up. So, we do reference the Flint Hills Job Corps specifically in 4.10 on Goal Four, related to leveraging partnerships of schools. We have a, a statement in there that's kind of specifically related to the things that are going on with workforce needs. So, we call out Technical College, Flint Hills Job Corps, and other technical programs related to those career academies and advancements for workforce needs. But certainly something we could include within that Goal Five statement too, because of that workforce impact.
Well, you almost have them all listed there, so you might as well just add Job Corps.
Yeah. Don't want to, I don't want to forget one.
I don't know where this would fall, and if Mike does fall under the region reimagine plan, I'm not sure. But every time we talk business, or even at the leadership meetings that we've been to, I haven't been to the one this year, but every time, childcare seems to consistently come up. I don't know where that would fall, if it falls under Goal One or which goal, but I, I think it needs to be stated. It's not a, I understand it's not, I guess, it may not be considered a city program or something the city should be offering, but I think it is something, when we talk about businesses, that's been a consistent conversation even in the chamber, at, at the chamber meetings. So, that might already be in there somewhere, I don't know.
You will see that in the full plan document, within the description of Action 2.8, related to regional, supporting regional partners. We, we do call out a lot of examples of those areas, childcare is one of them.
Okay, thank you, because childcare and healthcare can seem to consistently come up.
Yep, healthcare is included in that list as well.
Yeah, social services and other supportive services, yeah, it's in there in 2.9.
So, Jared, is the full plan available? We're just seeing this paraplane.
The full plan will be available this Friday, October 1st, and we'll, we'll be putting that out on our project website also. You know, email all of you to let you know when that's live, so you can take a look at the full plan document. This strategic plan, At a Glance, document is the first thing that's available for the packet. That'll be linked on the project website too, in case people want to digest it in a shorter format.
Because we're asking questions, and your answers are all related to the plan that we've not seen. So, I'm, I feel like I'm...
Yes, and we will be coming back on October 19th during that legislative meeting for a discussion item. That'll be following the public review and comment period, so we can provide you any feedback that the public has provided, related to the full plan document, and then that'll be also an opportunity for the commission. You all have been able to see that over the course of three weeks during that period, and then you can come back with any specific questions related to the descriptions of the actions, as well as, you know, the full plan document has an introduction section to kind of set the tone of why we went through this process. There's a, a section on the process that we went through, and a full appendix actually of a detailed description of all the processes and engagement efforts that we did and the people we reached. And we'll even have an appendix of all 2,400 pieces of input, if you want to read through that. But we, we felt it was important that that appendices be attached, so folks could see it. And then a lot of other sections within there that we'll go over with you on the 19th. Today, we really wanted to get this At a Glance document in front of you, because we haven't really been in front of you since that late June City Commissioner Retreat, there've been some changes. We wanted to get the goal statements, the new goal statements in front of you, as well as the list of actions, so you could kind of see where we were heading as we release the full plan.
Yeah, my thoughts on it, I, I really think it's pretty good on Goal Two, Three, you know, Four and Five. I don't have a problem with that, I can follow it. I'd like to see the details, which we'll get Friday. Goal One is the one that, you know, I think, you know, the modernization, I get that, the recruitment contention, I worry a little bit about 1.6, because it, it doesn't put any constraints there. And then the fiscal health, you know, what you have there for, you know, nine, 10, 11, 12 is fine, but, you know, 1.8, build adequate balances. I just want to see some more meat in there on that, because we're not addressing stuff like, you know, I think we should limit our city debt, you know, to, to a five-year average of what we, you know, we just, there is no limit to the debt. It's like the federal government, you just raise it as high as you want to make it. But there is some constraint from, from the state, but, but, but we, we need to be doing it less than that. And then, you know, we don't address the, you know, the enterprise funds, fencing those off. We don't address outside agencies, I don't know if you're gonna get into that, you know, the, the way we fund different things. And I just want to see more meat there, from, from that standpoint. And I think the average citizen looks at this, and it looks like it's driven by staff desires, not by citizen desires. Two conflicting things. Because, of course, to run the organization, if I'm the CEO, I want all the money you can give me. I want to make everything as, as, as good as I can make it, you know, for the staff and the organization. But the taxpayers have to fund it, and, and that's where the conflict is. And, and so in my mind, one of the things in strategic plan ought to be something to the effect, the city lives within its means, it lives within its revenue streams. And, and, and that means, you know, you, you don't start budget discussions with, we're gonna increase taxes. You start it with, this is where we're at, what can we do? And organizational effectiveness, you know, to me, is also lean management, as I've said repeatedly. So, how do you, how do you manage things so that you can do everything the staff wants to do without causing the taxpayer to have to dip into his wallet and shell out more money every year? And, you know, for the past 10 years, that's what the taxpayer's done. Even the years where the mill levy's been flat, they've been shelling out more money. And that's what I've been hearing. So, I would like to see something in this fiscal health plan that balances that, the citizens' desire not to pay more taxes, and also the desire to fix our CIP account, to be sure we retain, you know, our people, all those things. Those are two conflicting things, and I want to see something more in the middle, cause us to get there. And sometimes, that means putting a constraint on there, like, we're only gonna have X amount of city debt. And until that's lowered, you're not building anything else, City Commission, just that simple.
I just, so that, that word adequate can mean a lot of things to people. And if you're hearing that it's raising taxes, somebody else might be hearing that it's austerity, that it's cuts, it's not enough. And that's why it's a word that is appropriate to open this dialogue and discussion about what that means, because living within your means can be synonymous with adequate. It doesn't have to be, this says, when I read it, raise taxes. This says, let's have that discussion to meet the, the need. So, that's, it's, I think we're gonna interpret it through those confirmation biases maybe that we already have, but it's, I, I don't know a better word than adequate.
So, I think...
I don't mind you changing, you know, the word's fine. What I'm just saying is that whole, under fiscal health, I want to see some other bullets that attach, attack some of those things that I'm concerned about. That's all.
I think when, Jared, you mentioned all the community engagements you've had, and all of these people that participated, and I've seen some of that as well, when you went with the chart paper and everything to everybody. So, I think this is a combination of internal and external, which is exactly what the plan was supposed to be about. The piece about the financing and the fiscal part of it, I'm, I'm not in complete agreement that this is what the city staff wants. I think what often happens is, the community wants a lot of things, but there isn't really a price tag attached to it. So, when we talk to community members, they want to see a lot of things in our community, and they enjoy the things we have, and they would like, for example, technology. They want things to be, you know, I think we are transparent, but if we're going to do all of the things that we see in this, there isn't like modernized technology, software systems, that's gonna cost, what, $5 million? So, there isn't price tags attached to this. So, we really don't know what it means when we discuss the budget. That's why I think, because this is a big scope, broad picture, and then when we start discussing budget, we put in a million or two this year, or a million and two next year, whatever it is, that's feasible at that time to achieve that goal. But what the community wants, and what I hear is, I want this, this, and this, and then we don't come out and say, well, do you know it's gonna cost you this much? So, we don't really give the community an idea, the cost it is, whether it's with staff, or whether it's with technology, or whether it's with a certain machine that we have to purchase, whatever it is, or building a new fire station. So, there isn't, there's this disconnect between us not explaining when somebody says they want something. For example, when I'm walking, somebody says, they have a sidewalk, how come I don't have a sidewalk? Probably the person that has a sidewalk might be paying a little bit more property taxes and valuation rate because of that piece of sidewalk. We just made a decision to have sidewalks on both streets in some neighborhoods. So, that makes the property valuation a little bit higher for those homes that have a sidewalk on their streets. I'm not sure we explain these things clearly to understand... I'm not sure we explain these things clearly to understand that the wants have a price tag as well as the needs have a price tag. So I think it falls on us to explain what each of those things cost. Here, there isn't those line items, capital improvement program. Great, but I, you know, I'm not sure this is the place to attach a certain amount to it as this is what it's going to be, because we really don't know. So I think this, to me, this is a skeleton of what we're going to look at and hopefully achieve, bullet by bullet, and then tell the community if they want something, what it's going to cost them, instead of saying, we just, this is what the staff wants. The staff wants what the community wants to have in their community. I don't think their staff is looking for more work to do all the time. So I think we need to be clear about those asks and needs and price tags.
But the idea of, you know, to put it, you know, simply, part of the strategic plan goal as far as the taxpayer is concerned is, the goal needs to be to restrain the budget. And that is not clear in here. I don't know how to articulate that better. I mean, that's what the taxpayer wants. They want, they want the strategic plan to say, we are going to constrain our spending and keep it limited to what the citizens can afford. And I think, you know, Mark said when we had the budget meeting, why is everybody moving to Potomac County? Because they can't afford to live here. And so that's, that's got to somehow or other be included in this fiscal health, that somehow or other, we're going to restrain what we do so everybody understands. That should be a strategic goal to live within our means, within the amount of revenue streams we have coming in. And if we can increase those, which is one of the goals here, or subsets of it, excellent. But that just doesn't seem to be clear in here, and that's what I'm looking for. You know, something that's going to say, hey, we're going to try to, you know, manage within our means. And that just didn't seem to come out.
Well, when I, go ahead.
Lynda Morris, I think we also have to have some discussions about balance. So we have spent huge amounts of money on infrastructure in the North Campus Corridor and there's, you know, other areas around the community and have, at the sacrifice of some of the services for the, that the citizens enjoy. And so that's never, we never discussed that at all. And I think that, you know, the North Campus Corridor will be coming to an end during this five-year period. I'm anxious for it to end so we can look at what else, what else can we do? What is it that the citizens have been very patiently waiting for while we do that business that needs to be done? I have supported it too, but at some point, it's the concrete and metal that went out over opening the pool or some of the things that don't pay for themselves. Infrastructure didn't pay for itself either, it pays for itself indirectly. So, you know, there's some tough discussions that the city commission does not have. We just view it typically on a one item at a time basis. So there's that approach that we need to consider too. Thanks.
So, you know, when I first started looking at the goals and the subsets and stuff, it really came across to me as a, as kind of a wish list of staff and administration objectives and ideas and stuff. And the thing is with, with, a lot of the, the time was spent, the consultant spent with city staff and administration and sort of, it sort of set some of the guidelines. And so then the public obviously had a chance to weigh in on things, but it was weighing in on the things, I think, that the city staff had already considered to be the priorities of such. And so I know that you mentioned that a few things percolated up from, from the public input, and I hope there'll be more of that starting next, on Friday and moving forward that. But, yeah, I, that's my only concern, like Gwen had, is that there's, and people generally don't know, yeah, that's why I know you got to give them a background and a framework to start looking at because if the public walked in off the street and you told them, hey, what are your ideas for a strategic plan? They would, they would not have much help, not much input that would be helpful. But I'm really afraid that this is really skewed toward staff, department heads, administrative goals and purposes versus actually what the citizens want. And so I'm, I'm going to be watching when we get the details as to what those action steps are going to be. And the bottom line is the commission has the final say on all of this stuff anyway. And so it's a goal, the goal is to pay our people more money market rate, yes, that's the goal. This year, we're going to make a dent in it. We're not going to make the whole thing up and various things like that. And we're not obligating the commission to everything right away, but that's, if we don't at least have a kind of a target of where we want to go, we'll surely never get there. And so I'm concerned about some of the priorities. I'm, I'm still supportive of the idea and I want to see more details, but I would surely hope that maybe we can get a little bit more public input on, on some of the action steps maybe when we get to that point.
So I just want to jump in here because I do think it's important that, you know, these goals, you know, or how we, how we've organized the plan really did come organically from the initial round of input from the community. Now, we did have the well-run city organization because the general public doesn't fully appreciate all the things the staff does on a day-to-day basis to keep the city running until maybe something doesn't work. Then they get, then they get paying attention. So there's obviously the staff technical committee provided input on that, but I would not, I would not say that it's a wish list of staff. This really came from the public and I can draw threads back through public input about, the public cares about the local economy and the supporting local businesses. They care about those unique destinations. So, you know, Goals Two, Three, Four and Five, they care about infrastructure, they care about walkable communities and sidewalks and having well-maintained roads, not, you know, addressing flooding and things like that, that's all in here. And it's all things that the staff was also working on and concerned about. So I do think it brings that together. I do think that Goal One is where we parked a lot of the things that are more internal, that this, you know, the general community doesn't necessarily appreciate, but they can appreciate the value of, you know, modernizing technologies so that they can interact with, you know, the government in a more modern way or allowing staff to have more time to devote to, you know, putting staff time and effort into some of these other actions because some of the things are being automated or, you know, technology's helping them do their job more efficiently. So there was, tested some, some of these internal actions with the public back in May. It's sort of an objective level. And there was definitely, you know, support of, you know, recruiting and retaining, you know, quality staff, modernizing so that the government could be efficient. People appreciated that at a high level, right? And then, like you said, we've got to get into what the details are. You know, I think we see this strategic plan as a framework, as Commissioner Reddy mentioned. It allows some flexibility, so you're going to get, you're going to be able to get into some of the, you know, the details on this. But it is a way to, I think, live within your means, right? You've got the control to think about how, these are all the things that are important, and we've got to figure out, like I said, how we're going to get them done within the budget that we have, which is maybe a good segue into this slide I put up here about the wheel. Now, we talked about this at the commission retreat, had some examples from other communities. But we've taken and sort of made this custom to Manhattan so that you are planning, you know, you're starting this, you're planning the year ahead, and then you're, you know, you're not, you're not sort of waiting till you have the budget and then figuring out what to do with it, you're kind of planning it all ahead. You're getting yourself lined up and you're analyzing and implementing towards the end before you start again. So it is a cycle, you're continuously monitoring, you're sharing progress out. So this was something that we were hoping, excuse me, would help sort of, as you institutionalize and operationalize the plan, that this is a tool in which you're, and there's definitely needs to be more, you know, details and there's steps underneath each of these, but it does give you a framework by which I think you can make these decisions and decide, again, we're going to get some public input on priorities coming out of this next round of, the final round of public engagement. So I'm hoping we can give you some of the things that bubble up, like you said, that are really important to the community. But I would say, you know, all of these are important to the community. We heard these clearly throughout the process, but it's a matter of kind of where we start. Because like you said, we're not going to, you can't, you can't start everything, you're not going to be able to make a dent in everything, but you can start to move the needle on certain things and show progress. And I think that's what's important when you're communicating back to the, to the larger community.
Let me just go ahead and clarify why I was, when I, I said when I started looking at the thing, I think it's, the Goal One was the one part that I think was more staff-oriented. Three, Four and Five, I think everybody can agree on all of those action steps. Even the connected government Goal Number Two, there's probably about five people that care about that with the connected government and being more interactive with the, with the city. When only less than 25% of people vote in a city commission election, the vast majority of people have got more important things to do than worry about how they're engaging with, with the city government there, but that's, that's okay. But it was One and Two that were my concern, but I will, it was Three, Four and Five. Everybody wants economic development, everybody wants good roads, streets and water and sewer and wants a place that they can be proud of and bring their friends to and take around town. So just end with that, my, I will end with that, continue on with where you're at.
I'd just like to make a comment relative to, if you recall when we started this process, it's our initial strategic plan. So, and, and we've had, it wasn't a, didn't start out as a community with all our partners building a strategic plan. It was really focused on the city as an organization and how do we develop our strategic plan? So there was a lot of intercal, internal focus intentionally because of that. Now, I think we have gone way out and gotten a lot of community input as well as on the services we provide, and those are going to be some of those important things. And just as an example, you know, if we have revenue shortfalls, what is it that we're not going to do? You know, our hope is, our goal is to increase these fund balances over time so that we'll have a reserve to fund some of those revenue shortfalls and it's business as usual. But if we don't, then what services do you want us not to do from those, those priority rankings? And this document will help us going forward internally, as well as with the community and the elected officials to make that happen. So it has been purposely internally driven as an organization because it's our initial strategic plan for us to utilize on a regular basis moving forward. But I do think it has had a lot of community input and the tough job is with you all, clearly, in setting overall policy.
Okay, I want to, I want to skip to...
Is anyone in the audience that wants to make a public comment? On what we've seen so far? Okay, seeing none, any other commissioner comments? Sarah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was just going to run back. I skipped ahead because I wanted to put that implementation slide up because we were kind of talking about that. But I did want to land on the mission statement that was developed. You know, we did test this with the community, but we finalized it and kind of fine-tuned it with staff input. But really, you know, this statement at the top, we put the well-being of people at the heart of everything we do, is the sort of tagline piece, and then we kind of unpack it. And so this, you know, this tested well, it came from the public about what they wanted to see, but it's really, you know, going to, you know, come down to the, to the staff and you all to, like I said, implement this plan and realize the vision outlined in this document. So I wanted to just make sure we shared that so that you can see where we landed on that. And I just have a couple of quick slides for the timeline. I think Jared went over some of this, but we do have a public review period, October 1st to 17th. He'll send out the full plan document to you so you can take a look at that as well. Jared is going to host a public open house at City Hall on 7th. And then we'll be back on October 19th for another work session and then hoping to, you know, consider adoption in, in November. That's all I have, so any other remaining?
Sarah, Lynda Morris, the very, one of the, I don't have it in front of me. One of the very last items on the sheet was about community organizations. And the wording that I perceived in that is that it's up to those organizations. Maybe you could pull it up.
Which, which goal in Goal Five?
No, I think it's towards the end here. It's about, it's one of the last things. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, so that's why I'm asking you to. Maybe I need to pull it up. Oh, it's Civic and Social Engagement, it's on page 13. And it says, "All civic and community groups should create opportunities to explore solutions to issues of concern to the community. They should seek alignment with the recommendations of this plan and collaborate across interests, missions and constituents." It seems to me that we're putting the burden on those outside groups. And I, I want to be sure that we stress engaging that, those groups too.
Yeah, okay, all right. Yeah, no, I, yes, that's in about, that's in the kind of implementation section about how to use the plan. And it's just a suggestion, and I think we can massage the language a little bit, but it's, it's really about as the city is meeting with these different organizations, you know, you want to say, hey, have you seen our strategic plan? Here's what we're, here's what we're focused on. Because I think you'll, you'll find as other groups are going to want to align, they may want to see, oh, we got a strategic plan, let's see where we're, where we're over, you know, where we're aligned, where the gaps are and work together. So it's not a mandate by any means, and we can massage the language, but it's just an opportunity as the city's meeting with different organizations and things are happening that you can use the strategic plan to really illustrate what, you know, your vision, your values, what you're really about and what you're working on and working towards. And it's a way to get alignment across different groups within the community. But we can massage that language a little bit so it doesn't sound like a mandate, more of an opportunity.
Well, I want to be sure that we are receptive to those community groups and not just turn our back on that kind of input because it's important to us. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you.
Sarah, this is Yusha. I think it's important to let the public know that there is going to be an open house on the 7th, so everybody's engaged. One of the things I would like to see either at the October 19th discussion or at some point is during this process, it is our first strategic plan, and one of the things you had to do was keep the community engaged in this process during COVID and then some in-person, which one worked best? I would like to know, out of all of the systems and the variety of ways you had that dialogue, which created the most input, which one was the most effective? Because I don't want us to assume that doing everything online is the best way because it may not be the best way. Maybe it was when you went to them, was it at a restaurant, was it at a community center? When you went to the people, was there more engagement and dialogue? As opposed to when somebody does something online, they're just clicking and there's not much dialogue? Which one did you gather the most information, or were both ways the same? I think that's something our staff and we as commissioners should know. Anytime we think about, oh, we want a consultant to do something and have the community engaged, oftentimes they go to an online survey and that's the means, and that may not be the best way. So I would like to have some of your, what is it? Feedback on which was, which created the, the most, I wouldn't say outcomes, but which gave you the most direction or most feedback and which, which you felt was the most effective in that manner. I think this being our first strategic plan, it gives us some kind of a platform. And since we are thinking, in my opinion, short term, five years to me is short term as opposed to a 20-year plan, I think that gives us a path forward and to see how well we stick to something or how we tweak it as we go and how much we utilize it for budget discussions or any other projects that come our way. So I'm looking forward to those discussions and also getting community feedback now that we've had the draft at a glance evening.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that and I will, we'll pull some thoughts together for that October 19th. It's a little more refined, but I think off the top of my head, one thing that we, this is not just unique to Manhattan, like in all of our work across, especially during the pandemic this past year and a half, is that there isn't, we found, one way or silver bullet way. And so that's why we've, especially I think if you follow kind of what we did in the May, the May timeframe, is in this day and age, it's really about offering multiple ways. You know, you're going to get some people through the online, you're going to get people that want to engage in person, you're going to get people who want to engage in a virtual meeting, you're going to get people who, you know, you pop... you're going to get people who, you know, you pop up somewhere, and they're there, and you're catching them, and that's the best way. So we have really, you know, I think switched our tactics in the last few years, and especially with the pandemic, to really try to go to where people are, make it accessible for different, you know, different, you know, people all live busy lives, and so what's right for one person's not going to work for another. So it's no longer the era of, come to the public meeting at 7:00 PM on a Wednesday, that's your only chance to get involved, that is one way. We will also offer a virtual meeting at noon, we will also have an online survey that's self-paced, we'll also be at the farmer's market, so I wish it were simple, but I think that what we've learned is that it's really about offering a broad, you know, a broad suite of different opportunities. And it is, you know, it's a little more coordination, a little more work, but you get much, you know, you get much better broad, you know, spectrum of buy-in when you, when you can do that. And I think we did that, on the month of May, we were able to, with the help of the community committee, and Jared really used that month to do a number of different things, and be out in the community different ways. But I can, I would like to go back and look really specifically at what we did and kind of our numbers. I can give you a little bit more for this process, where we've really found that, you know, where we really found success. And of course, it's all caveated around that we were doing this during a pandemic, and I think we were successful, you know, beside that, which is even more of a testament to the, you know, to the work of the committees, and of the staff, and everything happening there in the, in the community.
Sarah, this is Commissioner Astorbrook. I, I want to make sure, and I know we'll have a couple more opportunities to speak, but... So, this has been a... From the get-go, there was, there was some resistance, that this was going to be just like other things, or this wouldn't have meaning. And I think what we've done and designed, and what you've been able to do with Planning Next, and your strategy, and working into the government, or into the community, has been intentionally designed to push back against that and overcome that. And it would be almost tragic if we tried to undermine those efforts at the finish line by saying that it's not community-engaged. And I know everyone on the commission, and we all selected the committee members, the steering committee was very diverse and representative of groups. Outreach was, the effort that went into ensuring that this wasn't biased was, is substantial, and shouldn't be, you know, minimized by a couple, you know, comments at the end. There's a lot of work that went into that, and I think all the people that served, and I thank you guys for leading that effort, and listening to all those conversations, trying to distill that information, and then going back and saying, we want different stuff, this doesn't tell us enough, over and over and over again for, what, a year, basically, during a pandemic? So I want you to know that I appreciate that, and I know that the system and this process is about as good as it gets when trying to get that sample. I can't imagine a way that we would have tried harder to, to get that done in this, this, in these conditions.
Yeah, thank you for that, let's, I appreciate that.
I agree with that, Aaron, I think, you know, when I'm looking at five goals here, I think we got a good 90% solution. It's just Goal 1 that I think Mark has made clear, and I've made clear, that we'd like to see that tweaked, and and personally, when I read it, you know, when you start reading Goal 1, it says, "Where employees are appropriately resourced with safe and modern technology." That leads you to think, and it talks about compensation, it's like, why isn't this focused more on budget? And that's what causes you to sort of go off the rails. The rest of it, I think, is outstanding, and that may be how Mark sees it, too. But good work there, any other comments you need from us? Okay, seeing none, then the meeting's adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Sarah, thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Lynda.
Thanks, Jared.